We're going to do something a little unusual tonight. Christie just showed me a video of a disaster that just occurred in New York City. There's been a big explosion in a building there. I don't know if anybody knows anything about that, but I'm going to ask that we say a prayer for the people there. So if you don't mind, we'll just take a second and we'll say, "Lord, you know, we've got a lot of challenges around us and people are oftentimes in your need. We're going to ask you to reach out to those people who are involved in this incident in New York City, look in on them, give them comfort up into the crisis that they're working their way through. In Christ's name we ask you this." So with that said, we're going to begin our meeting tonight, and I'm going to ask the public, we're going to have Bob Weisdeck in a little bit give us a presentation on our subject systems, and we're going to talk about that a little bit. Anybody who has the interest to speak, we'd ask that you identify yourself with the public record that's required by law. With that said...
The Commissioner's office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of March 17th, 2015.
I'll move.
Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spudleri.
Aye.
Mr. Claypool.
Aye.
I'm looking forward to the county fair discussion.
You didn't last year?
No, I did last year too.
Are you making that noise with that microphone with your pen or?
I don't think so.
What noise? I hear a clink, clink, clink.
He's breathing.
He's breathing. Could be.
Yeah, it's my brain's clicking.
It could be my brain's floating. I didn't know if you were tampering that. Where else can you get this guy on tape?
It is Thursday night and it is late and, you know, so we'll come again. So do number three?
The Commissioner's office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-034 in support to restore indigent reimbursement rate.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spudleri.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye.
It's the table.
It's the table?
Sorry. It's the table.
No, I...
I heard you.
Something's going clink, clink, clink on that end of the table.
Yeah, you heard it too.
Every time I go to write it, it's clinking, so I feel that it clings.
Don't talk about the building blowing up and then... interested in the discussion about the subject system, new rules and regulations. I'm sure you're here to ask some questions, so would ask Bob Weisdeck, our County Health Director, who's going to be in charge of enforcing those new rules and regulations, to come and explain what he's going to do to us. That's kind of a setup, Bob, so you need, do we need to set up or all set up?
I didn't bring the presentation because I'm not sure what you all wanted to see or hear, so I have some stuff. Also asked a sewage installer, Mr. Barry Meadows, if he'd come up and sit up here because he has to deal with some of these things. So I just wanted to get down through some of the highlights that I've seen. We discussed many, many issues in regards to what the people are able to do and what they aren't able to do. And of course, no one has all the answers at this stage of the game, and I'll be very truthful with you. My name is Bob Weisdeck. I'm the Health Commissioner from Geogu County General Health History, and I have to deal with a lot of these headaches. Well, I wanted to thank the county commissioners for allowing me time to be able to come and talk to you all. Now, what I'm going to try to do, I was here Tuesday night, I had another presentation with the Health District Advisory Council Tuesday night, so I'm getting pretty familiar with this room there, there's no doubt in my mind. Now, I will address any question that you would have later on if you could just hold on to them, okay? Now, here's how I want to try to do this. I'm going to point out a few items. The sewage rolls are 133 pages long. There is no way I will be able to go through 133 pages with you, okay? I wish I could, but it would take weeks. And what I'm trying to do right now is to give you an idea of what we have to deal with and what is coming down the road. Not many individuals are aware of what is actually going to happen. There is some traumatic changes that are going on. There's some things that I guarantee you that would probably make you take a double take as to what you're going to have to do in order to get a permit. Now, in our department, in November and December, we had record, a record amount of individuals coming in to get permits because of the new proposed changes in 2015, which they've just taken place. So I'm going to talk rather, I'm going to sit down here and go through some items and then I'm going to stand back up, but I want you to be able to understand what I'm saying. I don't stutter. That's one thing you will find out, I don't stutter. I will tell you the facts. How you interpret them is entirely up to you. By degree, I am an environmental and infectious epidemiologist. I am also, have a background in toxicology, respiratory physiology, pulmonary pathophysiology. So that doesn't make me better than you. I am well-educated, the good Lord blessed me, but I didn't come to Geogu County to beat up on anyone. Need you all to understand that. But I'm going to tell you the truth, and that's what you're going to hear. So as these rules progress, I will give you my honest opinion. And I'm an old coal miner. I had the roof fall in on me when I was 24 years old. It ripped my nose off and I have my coal mining tattoo. It busted my teeth all out, broke my neck, my lower spine, and crushed in my ribs. So I laid for two and a half years, and my wife was by my side and the good Lord blessed me. And now I have been in this county for over 28 years, and I feel that what we're trying to do is assist the homeowner as much as possible. Now, you all have a Board of Health, Board of Health member sitting here tonight, and I'd like her to stand up if she would. It's Christina Leivers. She has been a Township trustee, I think, for what, 30 years?
24 years.
24 years. This lady and the other four board members that we have are understanding that these rules are not the greatest things in the world. So when we looked at how the development of these rules came about, we looked at some of the information that the Ohio Department of Health put together, and I think we'll find that quite interesting. Because it says, "In 2012, the Ohio Department of Health survey of the local health departments across the state showed 31% of the sewage disposal systems were failing." That's pretty significant. But when you look at it overall, the data that they put together did not look quite clearly to me as to why we have 31% failure rate in Geogu County when the Board of Health members and I and my staff have worked so hard to get these systems to work correctly. Now, we have to understand there are two different kinds of sewage systems that have basically been utilized in Geogu County or through the whole state of Ohio. I'm going to ask Mr. Claypool, do you know what two they are?
There's a trench system.
Okay.
And a drip system.
Yeah, okay.
Off-lot system.
Does everybody...
Oh, no, no.
I got three. Now I got three, okay. But really, there's only two kinds. The kind that work and the kind that don't work. I was only, I was only, you're still my friend. I got to put a little bit of humor into this. This is sewage, you know? It really gets stinky at times. So with that, there are an onlot and there is an offlot. The offlot means that you still have a sewage component or miniature package treatment plan. The sewage, every gallon that goes into this package treatment plan goes off and discharges a gallon out into the environment, the stream, the creek, the road ditch, whatever the case. In 2007, the OEP, the OEP took over that program, thank you, and they have put restrictions on it. They put restrictions on that. So that comes under the Clean Waters Act. And EPA is the only one that can issue that permit. The local health departments cannot approve those permits unless they've signed a memorandum of understanding with EPA. We have seen this coming. That is an aeration unit. It has a motor inside the tank which shoots air out into the affluent, and then it becomes acceptable to where it can be discharged out. Well, as you look at this 31% failure rate supposedly by the state, it's become rather obvious to me, there are 10 other health commissioners in the state of Ohio in rural settings where we sit and we talk, and we said, "Gee, is your failure rate that bad in your county?" "No." "What's your failure rate? What's your failure rate?" So after we're talking failure rates, I'm going to take, I'm going to bring you into my world. I'm going to bring you completely into my world how confusing this can be. Because it is, and unless you understand what is actually being said, you can be misled very quickly. Because in the 31%, I think you would agree with that. Is that not true?
Oh, hardly agree.
Now, I try to get down the middle of the road the best I can. Am I perfect? No. I cannot walk on water, trust me. But when I tell you something, I'm going to give you the best information I have available. So after ODH, Ohio Department of Health, puts this literature out to convince the legislators that 31% of our sewage systems are failing, I am saying to myself, "Gee, that's rather interesting." Let me have that blue book, Barry, please. This blue book contains 51 pages of research. It outlines the type of systems that we have been evaluating in Geogu County since 2002 clear up to now. And when I look at this data, and I've said for years, and I put my credibility on the line, we have a 3%... Is it failure rate? Out of 100%. 97% of our onlot leaching trenches have passed the evaluation the very first time. Did I stutter?
Yes.
Now, do we fall within that 31% statement? I don't think so. That has been the impetus of my career here to try to make sure these systems either work or what?
Don't work.
Don't work, all right. Blake, you're right on it. Now, we've gotten to the meat of where we need to be. The state has convinced many legislators that 31% of these systems don't work, but I will tell you, I will caution you. Homeowners do need to understand how these systems function. The functional capability of these systems is very intricate. You need to understand that. If it's an onlot system, you need to know how the offlot system functions. You need to know that they have an aeration motor, it requires electricity. But as we look at this data that we're talking about, I have documentation right now from 2002 with 51-page report, and of course, the Board was directly involved in on this and said, "Bob, go for it. We need to understand what we're looking at. We need to see the trees, not just say it's a forest." This is what we've done. Now, an interesting part that I ran into just within the last hour and a half in my office, I have a newspaper article from Columbiana County, from the Health Commissioner, and he and I are personal friends, and he said, "Bob, I'm sending you something up that I think you may be interested to see." And it says right here, the study that the state says 31% of these sewage systems are failing, well, that would reflect a very poor on our image as a health department, which it would. But let's just face it, folks, if it's that bad, I need to go out that door. I don't deserve to be here. I'm telling you the truth. This man says, "Gee, we finished our analysis and we find out that we have a 8% slash failure slash malfunctioning rate." Wow, now comes the word malfunctioning. Why is that word important? But if you look through this documentation from the Ohio Department of Health, it just says failure rate. Now, if it's a failure rate, that means you need to replace it, folks. But if my staff goes out there and evaluates your sewage system and it is having a problem, if it is missing elbows or distribution boxes or something like that, it is incumbent upon my staff to tell you. It may only cost you $50 to get this thing up and running the correct way. Are you with me now? You're not going to put in a brand-new sewage system at the cost of $21,000 or $25,000, and that's where they are, okay? In that general range, depending on the type of system you have to put in. If you can take corrective action and put an elbow or two elbows or even a distribution box, I don't want your money. I just want your system to work right so you have clean water and your sewage system's working correctly. We're not here to slap anybody. The Board of Health has given me the direction, that's the way we're going, and that's the way we are going to go. We're here to help the people understand what's going on here. But if you look at that 31%, well, gee, I happened to get another notice because now we got another analysis from the Mahoning County Health Department, and it says, "Wow, we just completed our data analysis and we have a 93% passing rate." Well, somehow my math is all messed up here. I do have a background in statistical mathematics, and as an epidemiologist, I kind of wonder where are we coming up with these numbers? Because now, we're still at 31% of everybody in northeast Ohio has a failing sewage system. Well, if you have a malfunctioning sewage system that needs to have corrective action, how about getting on it? Do what you need to do. But if you have to put in a new system, I will tell you right now, they're much different than what we have had installed in the past. So the 31% that was utilized to get all of these new rules in is extremely questionable to me. Now, if you talk about old systems, they're saying 44% of the old systems are failing. This is their data, not mine. I would tell you that if you have an old system, you could be having a problem. I'm not going to lie to you, I told you I'm going down the middle of the road. But these numbers, once again, you have your onlot leaching trench system, and there's different designs. You have your offlot discharging system, which now, since 2007, and I repeat myself because I'm stressing a point, comes underneath OEP regulations. So these items that I look at, it says, "The process for repairing or replacing an existing system or installing a new system remains exactly the same as it does today." Folks, you have 133 pages of new regulations, and if you want to believe that statement that I just read, I got a bridge I want to sell you because it is nowhere near that. And I get upset. I told you I'm an old coal miner. If you're going to spend $10, or you're going to spend $1,000, or you're going to spend $10,000, I want you to get your money's worth. And that came right out of my mouth, and that is exactly the way the Board of Health's opinion is. We are here to work with you and to help you. No one wants to see anyone getting beat up. When we sit and we look, there are definite changes that have come in these regulations that many people don't have the foggiest idea until, until you have a sewage problem. Then we become the villain. We become the ones that your knuckles drag to ground and our fangs come down to our belt because we're going to tell you to reach for your pocketbook. We have done everything within our power to soften these regulations as we can. So as we look at this, my staff and many of the installers that I've talked to, many of them just shake their head and say, "We don't know where we're at at this stage of the game." Once again, I'm going to refer back to the Ohio Department of Health information. Current rules, 1977. Well, some counties may have stayed with us. Our Board of Health and our health department have made tremendous strides to change what's going on with these sewage rules to help them to be able to work well for you. It says, "Current rules, 1977, are 35 years old. Ohio has the oldest sewage rolls in the United States." Well, that's a pretty good statement. Well, I'm 63. I ain't afraid to tell you how old I am. I think I'm still working, okay? Do you know there are some states that have no sewage rolls? So what relevancy does this statement have? But if you flash it in front of someone's face, they're 35 years old. You may have a sewage system on your property, if it is properly designed. I guarantee you, I could make that sewage, if I could get that sewage system working for one year, you're going to think I'm crazy. If I can get that sewage system to work for one year, I can get that sewage system to work for 200 years. And I'm looking you dead in the eye, and I'm not turning away, but you have to know what you're looking to try to do. Remember, you can't see the trees for the forest? So as we go through these regulations, each and every one of them, I sit and I wonder, how can we really be able to understand where we're at? Because, see, it says the benefits of the proposed, the proposed rules, the 133 pages. Well, I'm going to give you a benefit, okay? So I'm going to read you one benefit. And the one benefit says, "The state average cost of replacing a sewage system is $8,200 and has not varied very much from the annual cost of 2007." And I'm going to let Mr. Meadows address that. But $8,200, that's what was promised to many local health departments when these rules come out. And I'm thinking, wow, if you can get me a sewage system that my people can live with for $8,200 and it works, amen, praise the Lord, well, I'll stand up and jump over that one, okay? But when I see the estimated cost on these new systems that are coming out, and I'm not eating every one of them, and they're averaging about $21,000, I guess I would kind of question that a little bit. Wouldn't you want me to question that a little bit? And that's why, that's why I'm here, folks. I kind of really question that. But here, here's the other one I really like. Homeowners will be able to pick from different designs and technologies to find the system that fits your budget, lot conditions, and water usage. I'm going to tell you right now, when you walk into my office, if you cannot meet the criteria of the first water table or restricting the limiting layer, and you do not have enough room, you don't have a choice, folks. We're going to tell you what you can do. That's bottom line. So it isn't the glamour that I read when I look at this stuff. It honestly makes me feel bad. And you know, how is it that we, little old Geogu County, made changes in the sewage rules that were acceptable and livable to the people within this county with thought in mind? We have people on fixed income. I was in court twice today uptown, and as I stand there, I have had people, 70, 75 years old, having to deal with the fact of, "We don't have any money, Bob, but you know what? The rules, the rules tell me you come out of your house." Now, I've got some little, I've got relatives a little older than me. Of course, I studied on stone tablets. How would you feel if you're standing there and you're talking to someone, knowing I don't have a choice and you don't have a choice either because now you're going to either spend the money or you're coming out of your house? This Board of Health has grollled over these issues. I've grollled over these issues. I've lost a lot of sleep and still losing a lot of sleep. This is serious. This is serious. This is not a joke. And when I have people that are sitting there, a mother with two children, one on each arm, and their husband decided to leave, and all of a sudden, I'm looking at them because they have a quote-quote failed system as based by the Ohio Department of Health, and they're saying to me, "Bob, I just lost my job." What are you gonna do? We've talked about this at the board levels. The Board of Health is doing everything within its power. And this department is definitely looking at ways to make sure it's all livable. These rules and regulations, we were told that if you use different types of systems, then you can get soil credits for this, soil credits for that. But everything is pretty much pushed towards the mechanized, the mechanized aeration unit tanks. Rarely are you looking at putting a standard leaching trench system in because of the perched water table or a restrictive limiting layer. So these rules in themselves have put the Health Department clear out on the edge of the limb. Because now, anything that's done is blamed on the local Health Department because we're the enforcers. But these individuals that wrote the rules and regulations, they stand back insulated, which I had a meeting yesterday with prosecutor, system prosecutor in my office saying, "We got some systems in here. If you read this code, it says that if you have a certain type system, if we walk out to evaluate it, we don't even evaluate it. We tell you right now, your system's dead. You gotta change it now." But Tim Grandell made a lot of changes, and he and I worked together. And I gotta give him credit because this man went above and beyond in regards to sewage. He put an appeals board process in. It hasn't been trijacked. But there is an appeals board that if you feel that you cannot meet this criteria, you can ask for an appeals board hearing to be able to challenge that. So when you look at what we're actually looking at, how we got into these regulations, I think to myself, perhaps maybe not everyone understands what's really inside there. And I read down through this document four times. And I tell people, you know, I have two brain cells left, okay? And every now and then, they work together. But today, I have one at home on charge because the other one's all wore out. And even with the one brain cell looking at this data right here, I feel sorry for each and every one of you. Because you know what? I don't want to fight with you. The Board of Health doesn't want to fight with you. This board has done everything within its power to protect you. But right now, we are stuck. We are, I'll answer your question in a moment. With what we have right now with these changes. These changes can be dramatic. These changes can cost you a lot of money. When you look at the cost, as we're talking about it, I'll be done here in a moment. Our leaching trench system design has changed dramatically in certain instances. We are seeing a rather large amount of what we call N P D S units, which is National Pollution Discharge Eliminating Systems. Every time a N P D S unit is put in, you have to have soils work done on your particular lot in order to, for us to take a look at. Every time a N P D E S unit is approved by O E P A, you are one step closer to sanitary source. Let me repeat myself. Every time a new N P D E S unit goes in, you are one step closer to sanitary source. That's a fact. E P A is documenting them. They have certain criteria for discharge standards. I don't want to get into the politics. I'm not a politician. I would, I don't play well with others because I tell it like it is. And that's where I have to be, to be able to have you understand this is what you're facing. This is what is actually, it's not coming anymore. You probably read articles where I said in the paper, "This is what's coming, be prepared." You've all seen those articles over the years. Guess what? The train is here. And it's actually what we have to do, whether we want to do it or not. They talk about repairs. They talk about replacements. There are so many limitations. If you have a subsurface seeping filter, if we come right back here and says, gee, you know, you could make changes. You could do repairs. One of the first questions I had is, hey, if we have a surface seeping or a subsurface seeping filter out here, can we replace it? The Ohio Department of Health says, "Are you crazy?" This is your literature. This is what you are telling us. So really, I'm extremely upset over all these different changes. Not because, not because it isn't better. If we had something better that, that, that we have data on, then I wouldn't have a problem with it. But how can all these other health departments now starting to come out and say, gee, I have a, I have a five percent failure rate? It isn't thirty-one percent. I have an eight percent failure rate. If we had a problem here, folks, I would have known it. That's why we started this for sale a property program. I either wanted to know if the systems that we designed are working correctly, or else we need to get rid of them. That's why I did what I did in two thousand and two. And you know what? The data proves it right there. I'm not hiding anything. I did it in such a manner that my staff members didn't even know what I was doing. I didn't tell them, "This is gonna prove that our systems are working." No, because then, that would have been a blah test. I did what is called in epidemiology, the blind test. And when my staff found out that I wanted to use this data to say, "We needed to continue to use these," or change, my staff was a little upset with me. They said, "Bob, why did you do this to us?" I didn't do anything to you. You gave it an honest evaluation. And that's what I wanted. Because you know what? As I look around this room, I feel I am responsible to make sure that your water supply system is clean. See, you are part of my family, whether you know it or not. You're part of the Board of Health family, whether you know it or not. Because we're all practicing public health. We should be. We should want that environment clean. That is what it's all about. And I didn't say, "It's pristine where we can run out and drink out of the creek." Whoa, wait a minute there. We're not gonna get that crazy, okay? So, based on what I see here, I didn't get into the real nitty-gritty of how you size a sewage system, the different types of sewage systems. You can still use some leaching trenches, but believe me, it would take me a week to explain each and every idiosyncrasy that we have here. Some of these trench systems are talking about, you have to have a vertical separation distance maybe of six inches to a perched water table. Well, but you still have to put that trench two inches down into soil situ soil, natural soil. And you could put your infiltrator plastic chamber in there. But now, you have to bring in two hundred ton of topsoil to lay over top of it. And then, oh yeah, this is true. Then, after you get to the top of your infiltrator, you gotta bring in another two hundred more ton of topsoil because now, you have to have six inches of settled topsoil or organic material, excuse me, over top of that trench. You know how much that costs you? You better raise a lot of little piggies because I'm gonna tell you what, it's gonna cost a lot of money. But I can only provide to you the facts that I have to deal with. So I don't want to belabor the point. I don't want to get into too much nitty-gritty. I'm telling you what's coming. That's my opinion. My staff are not overly happy with it. It's the law. And that's spelled L A W. We have very little room to be able to move around. We will help you as much as we possibly can. The board is dedicated of trying to find ways. The other issue that's coming is called an O and M permit. An operation and maintenance permit. You will be having your sewage disposal system evaluated either every year, every two years, three years, four years, whatever it is, at your cost. That's what's in this code. This code is something I would probably suggest that you read. It is confusing at times. The Board of Health and I and the rest of my staff are grappling with many of these questions. Many times, you're not allowed to even touch your own sewage disposal system. You ask other health departments, they're going to say, "Well, you need to talk to the Ohio Department of Health." You call the Ohio Department of Health at ten o'clock in the morning. You talk to one of their people, and they give you an answer and say, "Oh, this is what you have to do here." You call again at one o'clock, say, "Gee, I have the same question." But you get a different individual. Well, they give you a different answer. You call it, your gentleman's shaking his head here because he already knows what's going on, right? Call at three o'clock, you get another individual, you get another answer. It isn't the style that I like living in. And I know it isn't what you want to live with either. So these are the things that we have to deal with. You've got your drip systems, which are your high-tech systems. Some of them have computers on them. Some of them, the majority of them now have phones, okay? Gravity is basically the best. If you have a gravity system, the good Lord bless us with gravity. That's why I got bags in my mind. That's my excuse anyhow. And they always say, if you can get a gravity system and it's on lot, I would highly suggest if you have one, know how that system works. There's elbows inside the boxes. There's a lot of little idiosyncrasies. I will tell you what. I know I'm rather busy. Okay, I carry four hats in the Health Department. Okay, and the Board of Health's already hollered at me. You've got to stay in the office a little more. But I will do a complimentary inspection if you need it, folks. I will come to your house. But you're gonna have to wait because if I tell you I'm busy, I mean, I'm busy. You got where I'm coming from? But I will assist you to try to help you understand what you're looking at. And sometimes, if you hydraulically overload these, and Mr. Spitaler, I'm gonna ask you this question. Are you ready? Are you, and this is gonna be a tough question. This is your county commissioner gonna answer this question. You ready? How much liquid can you put in a five-gallon bucket? And we know that because we've talked back and forth with, with all three, all three commissioners. They're concerned equally as well. If you hydraulically overload your system, you are actually going to have a problem. I think you know that, okay? I can't get into every little detail with the sewage rules. I've hit some of the highlights, the primary highlights on it. If you picked up a permit before January first, two thousand and fifteen, that permit is still good for two years. At the end of that two years, if you do not have that system installed, you start all over with a whole brand-new ballgame. That's the state rule. However, I keep telling you about how good the board is, right? The Board of Health. The Board of Health said, "Bob, we want our people to get an extra six-month extension." That's the kind of Board of Health people we have. So we are allowed from January first, if you have a permit before January first, two thousand and fifteen, you have two and a half years to get it in. If you have not obtained that permit, we are gonna be looking at what we have in the two thousand and fifteen code. So with that, I hope I've done what you asked me to do. I don't want to belabor the point. I could talk for weeks on this subject, but I don't need to. I think you understand where we're at.
Bob, can you, I'm gonna make one quick. First of all, the law is not a permanent thing. The law is changeable. And it's changeable through you, the legislators. And with that said, Senator John Eklund has submitted a bill, and I'd like Bob to talk about this. I can read it or have you read it, Bob, if you're interested. It's a short bill, which allows us an out. You want us to read it? It allows us an out, and I'll just give you a quick summary on it. Basically, it allows the county commissioners to give the Geogee County a pass on the current state law. Tell me if I'm wrong in that.
You're correct.
And there are some challenges with it. We'd like some refinements, I believe. Bob can suggest those changes to the law. But what I'd like to ask you to do is to work with Senator John Eklund and our state legislators to ensure that this passes. Because this will give us an out on the current law. Now, there are some provisions in it that will create a problem for us if we exceed ten percent of the quote-unquote failure rate and so on and so forth. That throws us back into the Ohio State law. But this is a good effort to try and work around the current law until and if the existing larger provision that the law that was passed falls on its face, and I'm hoping that it does. In addition to that, Sarah Lotteret texted me just before I came over here and asked me to communicate to you that she is considering, along with John Patterson. By the way, Kari Kafaro signed on to John Eklund's bill. So it's being supported by both of our senators. A good thing. Sarah Lotteret and John Patterson are considering a complimentary bill in the House that would basically mirror this to give us some reading room on this. So Bob, do you have any comments on this bill?
No? Okay. I'm not a politician. I think you already kind of got that drift. The bill stands on its own merits for whatever that is. Can it be improved? I think anything and everything can be improved, approved even more. You know, he, he, there was a meeting January fifth down into Westwood, Westwood's Center, where there was, I think, how many people were at that? About three hundred people at that meeting, okay? In regards to the sewage rules. Senator Eklund stood up. Mr. Meadows stood up. I had, you know, a little part with presentation. Also, we had Representative Matt Lynch and that young lady from the Board of Health from Old County. So there was an open discussion. I think that's on YouTube, isn't it?
Yeah, it's on YouTube.
Okay, it's on YouTube, so. So anyhow, yeah, there is some legislation that's posed. It's Senate Bill one eighteen, okay? I think people need to take a look at it. The only concern I have is that it is written rather narrowly, okay? But that's just Bob's opinion. I think there, there could be some additional improvements, but at least there is some legislation that's being set up. I did meet with Sarah Lotteret in my office. She came in. She came in, she and Representative Patterson, which he called me at home. He's a personal friend of mine. We talked over. They would like to put in a mirror image bill equally as well. So, once again, I am under a time constraint that it is unbelievable. They've asked me if I could help them, you know, suggest this and expand this a little wider. We have 10 other county health commissioners in the state of Ohio that really want these, at least 10, that want these rules out of here. And I emailed them. They are not going to stand up in public, folks. Okay? I've been down that road. I've had EPA in this office going through every file that I did for a subdivision, trying to find something wrong where they could get me and take a program away. The Ohio Department of Health doesn't like me standing up here reviewing this material. So, they have dartboards down in Columbus that have my picture on them. And they're trying to get me all over the place, okay? But to me, I really don't care. I came here to do a job. I didn't come here to run for popularity contest. I didn't come up to run for political office. So, you guys are safe. I came up here to practice public health. That's who I am. There is a way that it could be done. And I feel that I know the way. I think it's pretty obvious with the data that we have and trying to work with people the best that we possibly can. Now, I'm not perfect. I told you that before. But I think we've got a good crew of commissioners. We've got a great Board of Health. I hope to say that in my humble way that I'm able to do what I need to do to help you all. Okay? So, with that, as, you know, Commissioner Clay Poole said, you need to contact whom?
Your legislators.
Your legislators. I'm not a legislator. I'm just a big man.
And I'm gonna step on Bob just a little bit.
Go ahead.
Because Bob and I were speaking quietly behind closed doors. That's when he really gets open and honest. So, meet with him sometime. He'll share the real dirt with you. And there are some improvements that he was suggesting. And so, I would encourage John Eklund, Senator Eklund and Sarah Lotterett and others to listen to our health director. He's got some great ideas. And I would encourage you to help them to do that. To listen to our health director because he's got some great ideas on how we might improve a great bill. And this is not a shot at Senator Eklund. He's taken a step in a very positive direction. But, the reality is, none of us individually can impact this. And I will tell you, just as another side note, the Nowaka Water Quality Board, who is yet another political organization, used the presentation that Bob referenced. I have a copy of it if anybody's interested in seeing it. And as you look at it, there's some questionable science in there. There's some statistics that makes you wonder, the 31%, some other statistics, failure rate. If we were, we'd be swimming in sewage if we had a 31% failure rate in Jogger County. And I don't see our stream flowing with sewage right now. So, there's some questions that should be asked. But there are powerful organizations with a lot of money who are working to promote this legislation. We have an opportunity with this bill that Senator Eklund was good enough to put forward and that Sarah Lotterett. They need your help. They need your cover. They need your backing. They need your voice down at the legislature to make this stuff happen. Because they can't do it on their own. So, that's the last thing I'll say. And I would love to hear from our installer.
One other item. If you have relatives outside this county, you may want to share some of this information. Because you know what? As Commissioner Clay Poole said, this legislation has to go through the whole Senate in order to get any backing. So, you need to realize that if you have relatives in other counties, you may want to call in and talk to them and, you know, see what they have to say. You're not gonna find many health commissioners standing up. Because you know what? You bring your head up above the ground. The Ohio Department of Health has survey powers. They can take the whole program away. I want this gentleman to talk and then we can answer any questions that you may have. This is Mr. Meadows. He was at the meeting that was down in West, was it Westwood? Okay? And in regards to, he does installations. He wants to give you a little bit of feel in regards to his side of it. Mr. Clay Poole asked me if we could get ahold of him. So, we did. We were fortunate. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Meadows.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. Little background, I'm an installer. I live in Tumble County. Three kids. I'm a service provider and I'm also a licensed plant operator through Ohio EPA. And the $8,200 number, okay? Well, before I get into the money part, you guys, the latest health rankings just came out. You guys know where you ranked? Third? Yeah. Where do you consistently rank?
Probably somewhere up there.
Yeah, somewhere up there. Last year, you were number one. But in the last five years, you were always bouncing in the very upper part, okay? And you need to realize, I live in Tumble County. We're at the other end of the scale, okay? The adjacent county, we're at the bottom end. And we have leadership that is...
There's a property over here, by the way. You can move.
Well, let me run down this rabbit trail. My wife, she mentioned, it's like, when we come to Jogger County, it's light. It feels good. And there's something to be said for you folks. And the transparency that you have with your health commissioner, your commissioners, your Board of Health, it's really a good thing. We don't have that in Tumble County. Our leadership is a closed-door style leadership where they know everything and they don't want to hear from the folks. Actually, there are armed guards at public meetings because they don't want to hear people talking. All right? So, congratulations on your consistently high health rankings. It's a tribute to you folks and to your leadership. So, congratulations. I'll speak to the $8,200 lie. Let's just call it what it is. It's a lie. When I go buy these parts to install a septic system into your yard, I can't even begin to buy the parts for $8,200. Let alone pay for the permits for the local health department, sometimes to Ohio EPA, sometimes to the building department, depending how it's set up. I can't even buy the parts and pieces for $8,200, let alone install a system in your yard and make a fair profit. All right? It was simply a lie. So, the average cost on these systems, Bob nailed it. You're north of $20,000, okay? Depending on your soil type and the number of bedrooms you have in your house. Because it's all, the flow rate's all based on the number of bedrooms. One thing that I think would be really good is to return the power to your local health department, okay? Your failure rate is very small. Very small. So, what you guys have been doing has been working. If it ain't broke, don't fix it, okay? That's the mindset here. And if this bill passes and the power is returned to your local health department, you will have an opportunity that will continue to make Jogger County an attractive place for people to want to live, okay? And business owners that want to move here and open up businesses and they can have a house located in Jogger County that they're not overly regulated with burdensome, high-cost septic systems. That's what we deal with in Tumble County. And our population is going down, down, down. So, I think that's about all I wanted to touch on. There's one other thing I'll just quickly mention. If these systems were so inexpensive and they allow so many options, as an installer, my bonding requirements went from $20,000 to $40,000. It doubled. So, why, if the systems are only $8,200, why did my bonding requirements go up to $40,000, folks? It's called a lie. The power needs to be returned to the local health departments. And under proper leadership, they know what's best for their individual communities. I guess, turn it over to questions and the floor's open.
I have a question about that...
Can you please state your name?
Janine Foltz, Claret Township. That 10% failure rate in that bill, are they defining, defining what failure means in that bill? Because like you said, they're saying 31%, but it's lumping things actually be fixed into that failure rate.
And see, when I read down through, is it okay if I just ask? Okay, I don't want to get in trouble. This is my format.
Transparency.
You're exactly correct. And that is, one of the issues that I looked at when I looked at that bill, it says that as long as you keep a 90% passing rate, the Ohio Department of Health cannot force us back into the septic rules. That has to be analyzed every year. We would have to submit a report. Now, let me give you an example. Now, I didn't come here to convince you, nor did I come here to confuse you. Let's go on. Okay. I do 10, and it says, you cannot fall below 90%, correct? That's what the bill says. And I'm gonna be very truthful. Say I do 10 sewage disposal systems. And they're of the old vintage. You know what I'm talking about, Barry. And I have two of them have a real severe problem. Where's that put me?
80%.
I'm at 80%. So, once again, you have to watch the numbers. I'm a numbers guy. Statistical mathematics. And when I look at the numbers and I go, wait a minute here, and I'm not faulting the bill. These are some of the items that we need to look at very carefully. Because if we don't pay attention to what's going on, and I have a bad rash, or, and I don't mean rash on my body, okay? I run into a rash of old, older homes, okay? The older homes are the ones that I'm greatly concerned with. Because those are the ones that granddad had and have a 55-gallon crock and the pipe goes down over the hill. Let's be honest. I mean, you know, there is no doubt and it's no shame. Because at that time, that was the technology. You understand what I'm saying? But if you have a bad group of inspections that you do and it happens to fall below that number, then we're all back in duck soup.
And there's no way back.
That's right.
Once we're out, we're out.
Right.
There's no way to re-enter this. If we improve things, we are now out of the system permanently. And that's part of a problem. So, as Bob says, we need to be wise and we need to be, you know, making sure that we've thought through some of these things.
And see, we also, to go on a little further, we also, like I told you, there are 10 other health commissioners in this state. But they are afraid to stand up. And I have promised them, I will not put their names out there because they don't need to be attacked. I had one health commissioner go with me to the Senate. And we, as a matter of fact, that time, Mrs. Ligers, our Board of Health member, she wasn't a board member at that time. But she rode with me to Columbus to give testimony opposing these sewage rolls. And when you stand there and you start to give that information, everyone and your brother wants to attack you. Well, what happened is, the other health commissioner that went with us to that meeting to give testimony, when we got back from Columbus within two weeks, the Ohio Department of Health was in his office and so was EPA. And he lost his state subsidies because they found something really significant. You got my drift, folks? This isn't a joke. Because you know what? The greatest thing in the world that they would love, ODH would love, would be to have me walked out of this county. Because they went to the Board of Health and said, well, here's what's wrong with your program, blah, 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 blah. That is, and I'm just telling you the truth. Okay? Sir?
You said that...
Please give us your name.
I'm Sam Workman.
Sam Workman?
Dan.
Dan?
Workman.
Workman.
And Burton Township?
Burton Township.
You said you would have some suggested improvements for the bill. Could you prepare a list of those for the commissioners and they would make available that, those to us? So, we could contact Senator Eklund or Congressman Eklund and Senator Lotterett?
I could do that. If it's okay with you guys. Wait.
I have no problem with it. But it's Senator Eklund and Representative Lotterett. You had it right the first time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And there's the other, we don't leave out Capri Cifaro, who happens to be the other representative for Jogger County. And John Patterson, Janine Joplin as well. They're on board and, you know...
It's bipartisan.
It's bipartisan. So, it's a good thing.
But see, the real, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good.
The real issue is, you have to remember, those are only a handful of individuals. It's gonna take much more than just those individuals. You got where I'm coming from? You're gonna have to have a vote in the Senate, whatever goes in. And that Senate has to be the majority vote in order to do that. Now, let me take you one step further into my world again. We already seen on the news what's going on with the algae bloom up in western Lake Erie, correct? Well, I can tell you exactly what's going on up there. Sorry, that's my forte. But, what got blamed for some of this is the failing sewage disposal systems over in western Ohio. They're saying that some of the phosphates coming out of the sewage systems help create that algae bloom up there. But 90-degree temperature, shallow water, and lake turnover, to me as a scientist, I would say, gee, that's kind of, you know, indicative. But now they're saying the farm runoff from the organophosphates and the rest of these other chemicals and the sewage systems that are failing are creating this algae bloom. But if you look at the topography of western part of Ohio, it tells you a whole lot. It's flat. Duh. And I'm not making funny. I'm just saying. That is exactly what you've got going. So, I could understand. But to get the legislators to vote on a piece of legislation when they're screaming about failing systems in western Ohio, then them come back around and say, gee, we're gonna let Jogger County off the hook because you have a better system. They're not gonna want to do that. So, it's gonna be more than just one person. Everybody with me on that? I see a hand. Sir?
Dennis Teague.
Dennis?
Teague.
Teague.
Yep.
From?
Thompson.
Thompson.
Oh, yeah, Township.
Township. Question?
I forgot the same question. No.
I don't have an answer for that one.
What I wanted to know was, okay, where's the potential or where's the push coming from to drive Ohio Department of Health to do, to be so irrational? I mean, frankly, I've read their, read at the bottom of their homepage on septic systems about, oh, six months ago, there's a statement in the bottom of it that talks about how residents, you know, rural people shouldn't basically complain because people in town are paying $450 a year.
You got your answer right here. That's what they tell me when I go to the meetings. They're saying, Bob, shut up. You guys have had a free ride for all of these years. Everybody else is paying for a monthly sanitary sewer bill. What do you have to complain about? That's exactly what the rhetoric is that we hear. Now, let me give you the bottom line where the Ohio Department of Health really wants to go with this, okay? You really want to hear? The bottom line is, they don't want you on residential sewage systems because they do not actually know how they work. Okay? Newsflash. All right? So, what's the easiest way for them to get you off of their back? Jack the price of the sewage system so high that you start screaming for sanitary source. Duh. We know this. But like we're always saying, if you have a system that works and it's proven over since 2002 with actual data, why is it that you are going to have to replace your system? with a newer, high-costing system? With all of the electrical, all of the maintenance? You know, there's only a few people that make money on these systems, okay? If you have a system installed, and it's by a certain distributor, and that's the only distributor in that area, that's the only person you're going to deal with. Do you want me to give you a real good story? And one that you all need to hear too. I had a friend, eighty years old. I'd go and have lunch with him every so often. Well, he had a new sewage system installed. He didn't want to bother Bob with the question. He got a bad company. This installer installed his system. He had a problem with it. Well, the installer, hey, that's your problem, old man. You have to sign a contract every year with these individuals to maintain it. Now, guess what? What's your name?
Eric.
Eric?
Eric.
I like you, Eric. But I'm going to use you as an example, okay? Don't take me serious here. Now, I still love you. I'm his maintenance person. I am the only one allowed to work on Eric's system. Well, Eric calls up one day, and I'm having a bad day. And Eric says to me, Bob, I need you to come out. And of course, grab me, old Bob, okay? Now, Eric, leave me alone. Go, you know, go have your system pumped or something. Well, then I turn around, I'll be out there in three days. No one else is allowed to touch that system but me. That's a lot. Unless you have an approved distributor from somewhere else, it may be another county. Now, I go back to Eric and say, you know, Eric, I was out here. Your maintenance contract will just say it's two hundred bucks a year. I'm going to come out and do three inspections. Well, Eric happens to catch me on a bad day. Do we, anyone else in this room have a bad day? Uh-oh, I'll leave that one go. But I walk out to Eric and say, you know, Eric, your contract now costs you four hundred dollars a year. What's Eric going to do? What's he going to do, folks? He's going to pay me, whether you like it or not, because you are now victimized. These are some of the items that I argued with the Ohio Department of Health. This is wrong, okay? But you have to understand, these regulations weren't designed for you. They weren't designed for the local health department. They were designed for the manufacturers.
That's the lobby.
Because they're going to put the money in their pocket. And they care less about you.
Let me make a statement, just so you know how the sausage is made, okay? There are a lot of lobbying groups. Go down to Columbus sometime. Go into the corner of State and Broad in the Legislative House, and go down into our legislature. It's actually very interesting, very historic. You can breathe in the air of all the decisions that are being made, and so on and so forth. It's very interesting. And see who's in the legislative offices. Understand how law is made. Because you have all kinds of special interests down there promoting interests. The water quality, I hate to keep coming back to Noaka, but it's a good example. So, let me point this out to you. I sit on the Water Quality Committee. I chose not to go this last committee because I changed the dynamics when I walk in the room. And I asked my alternate to go there with a tape recorder. And I got to hear what was said in that room. If anybody's interested, I will share that with you, and I will share the tape recording with you. And this topic was on the agenda. But these are the people that are on that committee. If you want to know who's making decisions for your future, the health commissioner for Lorain County, the county engineer for Lorain County. Guess who picks all of the committeemen for Noaka? The county commissioner from Lorain County, Ted Kelo. The district administrator for Cuyahoga County Soil and Water District. The chief executive for N E O S D. That's the Northeastern Ohio Regional Sewer District. The Cleveland Health Director. The Local Watershed Group, which includes the Western Reserve Land Conservancy. The Environmental Protection Agency representative. Do you see or hear any of those representatives on that critical committee who is creating a strategic plan for our region, were included in that region? Do you see anybody on that committee that will be representing outside of myself, representing your interests? Those people are funded with millions of dollars through the dollars that come into Noaka to go down, we're just paying thirty thousand dollars for six months. We're paying a legislative person out of a law firm, very high-end law firm, to lobby our legislators down in Columbus, we being Noaka. You're working against special interests. The Township Trustees Association has a special interest lobbying organization. The County Commissioners Association has a legislative lobbying organization. And we spent lots of money lobbying for your interests. I actually have their legislative agenda, and I just got through today going through and putting notes in it for Sarah and John, saying, no, 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 yes, 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 no. How else are they going to know where we stand on these kinds of things? But understand, there are special interests who are lobbying for changes to the law. And if I look at the special interests in the Water Quality Commission, most of those are urban communities who have an interest different from ours. And they are driving the vote. So, the only way to overcome that is for us to get more people engaged and to get our, the people that are supposed to represent us, our legislators, to help us to understand how to help them and to enable them. Because as Bob so eloquently said, we're a little fish in a big ocean down in Columbus. And there's a lot of legislators that we need to work with. And by the way, there are other rural communities. Ashtabula is a rural community. They have septic system issues. They're concerned about their septic, septic systems, the same as we are. They're not as maybe motivated, assertive, aggressive, whatever you want to call it.
Vocal.
Vocal. We're not as vocal as perhaps we are. But there are those who also have an interest. Some are, you know, more frightened than us. I mean, maybe we're not as bright, I don't know, but...
I'm not as bright.
So, but, you know, you understand what I'm trying to tell you. We're working against other powers. We have to understand what we're up against in order to get an outcome that would benefit our communities. And so, I'm going to tell you all that. I mean, there's a lot more we could say about that. But I think Bob would understand that also, so.
Sir, again?
Dennis Teague.
Dennis Teague.
Thompson.
Thompson, go for it, hurry.
No, what you describe about the urban influence on what's happening to us, that describes to me that they wouldn't be to our benefit. But it would, it doesn't seem like it would be inclined to be to our detriment. There must be something else that's pushing them, like the manufacturers, or installers, or contractors are pushing them in this direction.
Well, I will tell you right now, and, you know, I mean, I could go on for days. But you have the TAC Committee, which is the Sewage Technical Advisory Committee, which has thirty-one members on it. Thirty-one of these members, two of them are from the health districts. The rest of them are engineers and manufacturers of these aeration units. Got your drift? So, it used to be if you had an aeration unit, you had to go through what is called NSF testing, National Sanitation Testing. It costs twenty thousand dollars in six months with your product being in Ann Arbor. They've done away with that testing procedure now. You go to a private lab of engineers. They do the test results. And then, at the end of thirty days, if your aeration unit meets those standards, you are allowed to come to the TAC Committee and get it approved for use in Ohio, okay? Now, we have had a tremendous... Remember when I said, when you're talking off-line, that is a N P V E S system, correct? We still, you still lock in? Those could only be approved by O E P A. In this county, we have, and I designed long ago, twenty-some years ago, that you would have to have an NSF forty, Class One Home Aeration Unit, fail-safe design, dual alternating surface sand filters, and a UV light or dechlor, or chlorination and dechlor where you go to the road yet. Well, everybody was up in arms. They didn't like these ugly gray boxes in their yard, okay? Remember the surface sand filters? You probably see them. Well, I don't like those, those are ugly. Let me tell you a little story. The units that they have required by the TAC Committee and approved by O E P A to be discharged off the property, sometimes that's all you put in is the aeration unit. We tested those. I think it was close to a hundred of them we tested to meet the standard under the Clean Waters Act of O E P A, okay? Sixty-one percent of those units failed to meet the test results. Brand new. I'm sitting here knowing that these people are paying this money. And you know what happens after five years? You have to go and renew your permit. And guess what happens? You are now ordered to put in surface sand filters. And that was the standard system that we utilize in this county for less than fourteen thousand dollars. What did they do to us? They took us back twenty-some years with our research and knowledge. And those surface sand filters are there to protect the residents. And that's why I put them in there. Yes, ma'am?
All right. In looking at the new states, I'm Claudine Stein for, from Auburn Township. In looking at the new laws, one thing that's in there also, it says, "The new regulations do permit a local health district to exercise some judgment based on local soil and site conditions to create limited alternative regulations and provide some flexibility in the approach to the administration of the regulations locally." How long of an arm does that give you?
That put us in a box. Because they can put any statement in there they want. They are insulated. We still have to follow, does, is there a perched water table within a certain distance? The Board of Health members had to adopt what the specifications are for a perched water table. That has been the biggest issue in this county that has prevented us from putting in standard trenches. We've used standard trenches with a three-feet-deep curtain drain, which dewatered the area, which allows the sewage flowing to be absorbed.
So, you're saying this gives you no flexibility, though it says that it does allow?
It could say, I'm telling you the truth. It could say anything it wants. But when you come back to that code, and they tell you, you have a perched water table that the Board has to adopt. And the Board has to set a number, which we had to officially adopt, a perched water table number. That perched water table in itself that's in that code prevents us from having any discretion.
Do you have any idea also how much, or, I mean, I know this isn't your calling, but maybe the installer can? Last night, I was at the Summit County meeting with regard to septic installations. And they have over a hundred people there. It was very well-attended in one context. But they're talking about the big cost, the installers and the septic people, the additional costs themselves, like you said, for bonding and liability insurance, even though some of the communities have said that they're waiving some of these fees that they're going to charge, but they have to do this additional paperwork, even if they're just coming out to look at a septic, to pump a septic system. Do you have any idea what kind of additional costs people could be looking at when they do have septic done?
I'm really not sure of your question. Can you go a little bit more? When you say additional costs, are you talking on the health department's side?
No, they're talking about the fact that they, as service providers, are incurring increased costs for their liability, even though in Summit County, from what I got, they're waiving a lot of the fees.
Okay.
But the people are saying that they still have to get this additional liability, additional bond. The cost is going to go up because now they can't just come out and pump. They have to fill out a questionnaire.
Okay, I understand now.
And make assessments that they are unqualified for.
Let me, well, in one of our local meetings in Trumbull County, we had a roundtable, and it wasn't as transparent as this. But one of the local pumpers was complaining about the fees, or the paperwork, okay, for a PortaJohn. And their driver has to fill out a page form for every single PortaJohn. And we're like, that doesn't make sense. And I was joking, I said, would you better stock up on ink pens there? Some of the other situations where you have to exhaust all online options before you can use an off-line. So, these are a hundred and twenty, thirty pages. I was, I took a test on them, I got ninety-eight percent on it. And as I go through these, my head, it makes my blood boil and my head spin. Because some of the requirements are so outrageous. And I looked one up. Bob mentioned they have had good luck with using their curtain drains to lower the seasonal water table. Likewise, we've had good luck using curtain drains to do that. Now, with these new regulations, if you want to use a curtain drain to lower the water table, you can still do it. But you have to have it monitored, all right? And you have to...
Have an engineer design.
An engineer design, which is very expensive. But then, you have to have an engineer come out January, February, March, all the way through the thirtieth of April. So, we have approximately a hundred and twenty days where this thing has to be monitored. How much is it going to cost a homeowner to hire a professional engineer to come out once a day and monitor those wells, and then keep a record of it?
Once a day?
Once a day.
Once a day for four months.
Bottom line off on this?
Oh, you're right.
Okay.
You're right on the money, at the homeowner's expense.
Okay. I mean, if you get an engineer to come out for a hundred dollars a shot, that's a deal, okay? Okay, that's a deal. So, that right there, while it says, yeah, you can use curtain drains, is it really, can you really use it? No, the answer is no. You're going to have thousands of dollars. You know, if you got a bulk rate, save ten thousand dollars a year, hire this engineer. Is that really a good cost-effective, as they call them? You're going to have all these tools in your toolbox.
You're right.
I liken it to this, you know? I like wrenching on things, and I don't like Chinese tools, okay? Because they break, they're not reliable. And I liken these rules to a box of Chinese tools, all right? Did that answer your question?
It does. But do you have any idea, though, percentage-wise, where maybe some of these costs is?
Yeah, okay.
I had, you know, hitting back. The pumpers used to be able to just walk out, open the lids, pump your septic system. Am I on the right trail? I had it for an hour and a half from a pumper. He comes out, pump your tank, wham-bam, he's gone, see you later, maybe next year, three years, five years from now, whatever. I had a pumper individual that I know real well went off on me. And of course, he apologized. He said, I know you didn't do it. They have to fill out a four-page report, tell you what the structural integrity is of your tank, if it's concrete. They have to make sure that the top has not been separated from the seal that they have to put around before they set the lid on top. He has to look at the inlet, he has to look at the outlet, see if there's any cracks or any other liquid that may be getting out of this septic tank, which may be twenty-five, thirty, forty years old. He is now responsible. And he, the individual that I spoke to, and there's quite a few of them now that are really mad, their pumpers, they're saying, we're not building on this four-page report. By the law, guess what happens to him? He's in big-time trouble, guys, okay? He said, I am not here as an inspector. I'm here to pump out the doo-doo, and I'm on my way down the road. Of course, you have to follow EPA criteria with line stabilization and the rest of that. But he knows that. But he said to me, he said, Bob... But he said to me, he said, Bob, he said, these are totally ridiculous. So there is getting a grime swell of even these installers, pumpers, any of these people, unless they're making big money. I mean, hey, they're happy. There's no doubt about it. But who's it hitting? It's hitting you guys in the pocketbook and hitting good installers like this. Between the eyes, he's out here trying to give you a break. He can't give you a break. It is going totally nuts. And who's going to get hurt? You guys are going to get mad, holler at the county commissioners? County commissioners were good enough to have this meeting tonight. I'm surprised we didn't have a room swell here. But the thing is, the people down at the Ohio Department of Health in Columbus don't care, guys. You're just a number. But see also, let me tell you what's in that sewage code. In that sewage code, they now have the law and the ability to do surveys. What's that mean? That means they could walk in my office and say, we want to review every file that you issued a permit on. Now, we have to send them money. We send Ohio Department of Health over two hundred thousand dollars a year. That is re- admitted for what we're doing, their job. We over two hundred thousand dollars, which is the same amount I mentioned the other night, right, Chris? At the H D A C meeting. They give it and they take it right back away. And the fees that they have adopted are going to increase every year.
Bob, has any of these agencies that are like-minded, like us, the pumpers, the installers or so, has anyone approached the Attorney General's office to find out whether or not these laws are even legal? I mean, you know, if I hear you right, and I'm no rocket scientist, but I know that if I dig up to earth to get to my septic tank to have it pumped, if they want to check the integrity of the tank and the seal around the lid, then you have to dig the whole perimeter of the tank up.
Right.
Now, my tank is wonderful. It's going to pass. Everything's going to go great. Now I'm going to put loose fill in on top of it. Then we're going to get a hell of a rain. And now my tanks are going to go floating up out of the ground. Does anybody that writes this crap pay any attention to what it does?
I wonder how you as a sanitarian, I need two new sanitarians because he's regular. You're exactly right. This is what I'm saying. It's ludicrous. But I even went as far as went to J Car before they adopted the last step. Tim Grandell went down and he protested the rules and says there's a conflict. I went down and protested it. Ladies and gentlemen, if you ever want to get ignored, ask Mrs. Livers. She went down and you could go down to some of these people and if they don't like what you're hearing or they're in a clique, they get up and walk out of the room. And you're sitting there and you might be talking to two legislators.
Maybe we're talking to the wrong people. Maybe we're talking to the wrong people. Maybe we need to talk to Mike DeWine and his staff and have them. We'll make a great assumption here. But let's assume that they'll listen and if they, and take the testimony of experts. They carry more weight than we do.
And I would agree with you. I'm looking at this audience. I'm basically pleading with them. You help me. And that's the way government is. You help me and that's it. No, you help me to help you. That's what I'm telling you. That's what we three, the three up here are saying. You need to get a hold of your legislators. This is not a joke. You heard from a good installer that's trying to do the best that he can. I'm sitting here saying, guys, my hands are tied. The legislators are the ones that, under the Ohio Administrative Code, to make that a law, then under the Ohio Revised Code is where they make the rules. The rules are what's basically going to crush us. It's going to make life difficult. Yes, ma'am. Name, address?
Dorothy Stang, Chardon Township.
Dorothy Stang?
Yep, Chardon Township.
Chardon Township, yes, ma'am.
How many septic tank contractors do we have that have licenses for Geogga County?
We, at this stage of the game, we do not do, we're not allowed to do the testing anymore. We have on our list, that I'm aware of, and it's updated every day, of course, even though the state doesn't know it. I think there's like forty registered installers.
And can they be out of county?
If they're registered.
Okay.
Is that all you have?
Yeah. It was too bad that we didn't know this last night because Mr. Ekland had a tele-town home town meeting and was asking for questions.
Now you have some questions. Unfortunately, you know, and hopefully you've appreciated it tonight. Bob's come out, you know, he's made the time to talk about this important issue. And I thank you guys for coming out. This is important. We get everybody engaged because we cannot, this cannot be solved without everybody involved. And, you know, we've got a lot of opportunity. I think Mr. Ekland's supposed to be out tomorrow at a individuals.
Yeah, we did, we are limiting it though to twelve outside participants in addition to Mr. Ekland. So we can take a few more folks who'd like to come to our farm.
You know, I will say John's usually pretty reachable, Senator Ekland, and very approachable. And so I would suggest calling his office and, you know, setting up a meeting.
Call his staff.
And call his staff. We could ask him to come over to a commissioner's meeting. You know, one of the things that we've kind of evolved these Thursday and I meetings to be is kind of a forum kind of a thing, which I think is very healthy for the community. We'll bring topics in and discuss these and get people engaged and informed and all that kind of stuff. But we'll invite him over and I'll let him address you, everybody.
You want to take a couple more questions?
Yeah, I need a couple more and then we'll kind of wrap it up.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Rick Chambers.
Rick?
Rick Chambers.
Chambers?
Yeah, I'm a local realtor. I live in the village of Burton.
Okay.
My question is, with the new legislation that's going to come out, there's going to be stricter standards. Is there going to be a required point of sale?
We have a required point of sale in this county that is not going to leave.
It's going to stay the same.
It stays the same. It was adopted as one of our local codes. We are not allowed to touch the state code. That is what is protecting the water supply in this county. It has not gone away. And let me tell you why. We had a Board of Health member that bought a house. The realtor told him that the sewage system was working just fine. And the sewage installer evidently wrote on the piece of paper, it says, "Working as designed." The Board of Health member bought it and he had to put in a new one within two months.
So with the tougher standards that we're going to have now, how's it going to affect the saleability of homes?
It has no relevancy at all. Unless it is a public health nuisance, that system will pass. If it is on-line leaching trend systems, it is evaluated based on the fact if you do not have any sewage effluent rising on the top of the ground. And if we put dye in there and you do not see the dye down over the hill, that system passes. If you have an on-line discharging system, if there is no discoloration in that liquid going out and there is no odor or bowel odorous material, then guess what? It passes. If it is black or discolorated and it has a sewage odor, it will be tested.
Okay, I have two more questions.
Go for it.
Who votes on the point of sale for Geogga County?
There is no vote. It is the law.
Well, who decided?
The Board of Health is the one that adopted it. It went through the county commissioners based on the fact of what we had, based on the fact of all the evaluations that were done that really didn't tell you the sewage system was working at all, period. It only said was working as designed. I will never allow that program to disappear. We're going to be honest in this.
Okay, we have, and one last question, please.
How many, you said ninety-seven percent of the on-line leaching systems pass.
Yes.
How much did you test?
I would have to go back to my records and look. I'm not going to lie to you. I don't have that number right here.
Is it a public record?
Oh, you mean over how long?
No, like last week.
Oh, I'd have to go back, go back and look at that data. I'm not going to give you a touch number. I'd have to go back.
Listen, this gentleman over here has been looking to ask a question.
Sure.
Steve Engling from Bainbridge Township. I don't really have a question, but in the interest of the transparency of this meeting, I'd like to maybe share some other observations. As a real estate professional who deals with people day in and day out with septic systems as it relates to the new legislation, I'm not going to talk about or debate the eighty-two hundred dollars. I don't know where that number came from. But in all honesty, in my opinion, it's irrelevant. A system's going to cost what it costs and what that installer's going to charge for. These regulations, the current ones and the old ones, they're about public health. They're not about the type of septic system. They're not about the cost of septic. They're about public health. A septic system either effectively treats, it discharges, or it doesn't. Now, this becomes a matter, in my opinion, of how we monitor, measure, and maintain that public health. Right now, the point of sale is how Geogga chooses to address this. When you talk about the percentage of passing, I don't have any way to dispute that. It's probably correct. The thirty-one percent failure rate that they came out across the state, I don't know where that came from. But I will make this observation. I would tend to suggest that the percentage of septic systems in our county that is tested, because they are almost exclusively tested when the property is sold, is very, very low. So the individual who has lived in their house for twenty years with maybe a thirty-year-old system, isn't selling, doesn't plan to sell, may or may not have a safely operating septic system. But it's not tested. There's no provision to test that unless somebody complains it's a public health nuisance. Now, in the new regulations, we have an opportunity to improve that. In the regulation, it specifically states, in the new regulations, the Board of Health can establish a sewage treatment district. They can provide a responsive approach to resolving sewage treatment problems. The Board of Health shall promote compliance through educational outreach, and Bob's an educational health professional, including but not limited to providing information to sewage treatment system owners, homeowners, okay, on the type of system they own, how it functions, how to manage it, how to maintain it, and care for it to ensure proper system performance and sustainability. In doing so, we assure that it passes the point-of-sale test. Help ensure that the sewage treatment system owner, the homeowner, is provided with operating and maintenance instructions and service reporting requirements. I'm unaware of any homeowner in the last thirty-five years that I've been selling real estate that has a septic system in Geogga County that when they purchased it has ever received a single educational piece of information from the county, the commissioners, the Board of Health, the health industry.
I received one.
Okay.
And I had a point of sale and I was very grateful for that because the person knew I was going to buy the home from. I knew nothing about septic systems. I'd never owned a home in a septic system. And I was very appreciative of the fact that I had a point-of-sale inspection that helped me to negotiate better terms on the purchase of that house. And I will tell you that there, one statement that you've made, and I think Bob might back this up, is there is a program in Geogga County to do asphalt testing. And so there, our road engineer, county engineers, are responsible by N P E S rules to go out and check when there's indications in ditches and so on and so forth if there's a failing septic system. And how many do we have this year? Forty-some that were submitted as potentials and four or thereabouts?
And they're under investigation.
What about the systems that don't discharge off-line? That's the clean water.
Okay, but let me go back. Those rules keep in the game.
Excuse me, Bob. I'm making my presentation.
Go for it.
Is this going to be long? I'm just going to.
No, it's not going to be long. In these regulations, it also requires the documentation, record-keeping of pumping of septic tanks. I agree with Bob. We can put together a septic system that will last for two hundred years. But there is probably the most key component in that. And that's pumping the tank on a regular basis, like changing the oil in your car. We have no regulations requiring that. We have no monitoring of when it's pumped or where it's pumped or who pumps it, turning in the sheets.
Yes, sir.
You may think, you may think that it's there. And they have slips. But I'm telling you, the homeowners I talked to, they may not know when it was last pumped. We called the health department, asked for the records. It could be six, seven years ago that they have a slip from the pumper that says it was pumped. Now, the seller may tell us it was pumped three years ago. But there's no control on documenting the pumping of the septic tanks, which is, Bob, is that probably one of the most critical activities that a homeowner can do?
This is your presentation.
So I'm going to ask you a question. I can ask a question. Is that probably the most critical?
I will address all of your questions when it's my turn to talk. Right now it's yours.
So my question to you is, is that probably the most critical maintenance item a homeowner can do on any type of septic system is to pump your tank on a regular basis?
That would be quite obvious to me.
But we have no regulation or control of it, except in the new regulations.
What you have just said is certainly not accurate at all.
A lot of what you said isn't accurate at all either.
Okay. There is a requirement. And let's really get to the nitty-gritty. Pumpers are required, under the law, to submit a pumper receipt form. But let's be realistic. When the I R S knocks on your door, do you think they're going to put that pumper receipt form that they made three hundred dollars on and didn't stick it in their pocket?
It has nothing to do with the I R S.
We had, oh, yes, it has a lot to do with the I R S. I had a sewage pumper had over six months of pumper receipt forms in his briefcase. I brought him in front of the Board of Health to lose his pumper's registration because he didn't submit them in a timely fashion. And that's exactly what that rule says. But I cannot have Gestapos running around from house to house to house making sure that whoever pumps that system, this is an honor system. That's what this is supposed to be. We have.
Public health. It shouldn't be an honor system.
Well, then, okay, then let's look at it this way. How about if I have a registered sanitarian sit at everyone's house every day and make sure that they, no, wait a minute. This is how ludicrous the statement is that you're making me. We, you, I'm looking for two registered sanitarians right now. I'm advertising for them because of these rules. You can find a chicken with teeth before you're going to find a registered sanitarian.
My point is, why don't you have a monitored, documented program for pumping of septic tanks? Like you, you get a record every time a house with a septic system is sold.
We do get the pumper receipt forms that they send us. We have just hired a secretary to get that backlog. Is it more important for a pumper receipt form than it is for a secretary or me to be working on a dog bite? That a kid had part of his face tore off?
I'm not talking about dog bites. I'm talking.
I'm talking about daily life in the health department.
And the daily life in the health department, from a public health standpoint, for septic systems, to me, would be well spent creating documentation of regular septic tank pumping. And your ninety-seven percent passage rate of point-of-sale inspections could go to ninety-nine. But what about the houses that never sell? You don't know if they're pumped or not. Shouldn't we know that?
I am not going to become a Gestapo. The only way we are involved with that, are you trying to tell me that I should tell every resident in the county that they have to have their septic tank pumped every three years?
I wouldn't have a problem with that. You tell them.
You wouldn't have a problem with it.
You have to inspect it when they sell. What's the difference?
They have mandatory pumping in Summit County and they just die.
They have mandatory pumping in Summit County, and they just stopped it, and they were supposed to do it for every three years. People love to do it.
Okay, this is a big question. You can take this offline with Bob. I mean, I believe, and thank you for your input. We appreciate your input. I think this is an important dialogue to have. All sides should be heard, and I think that that's a very healthy thing to do. The one parting comment, we need to probably end this because it's getting bleak. And so, but one comment, and I'd love to carry this conversation up because I'll stay here all night long if anybody wants to have a discussion with me. But one important comment is, we live in a very healthy community. I drive around my neighborhood in Geogga County to all kinds of neighborhoods all the time. We are not swimming in sewage. The best indication that things are working is that if you look around, because you're not seeing major problems. Are there some problems some places? Sure. And you know what? You have an opportunity as a citizen, if you see a problem, to call the health department, and I guarantee you, our health director is going to deal with that problem. And so with that said, I'm going to suggest that we adjourn the meeting. Anybody wants to continue, I'm going to stay. I'm going to ask Bob if he'd be willing to stay. We can certainly carry on the conversation beyond the formerly adjourned meeting. First, need to hear, I need to adjourn. So we've got a meeting adjournment, and so this meeting is adjourned. We can continue the discussion as long as anybody wants to stay. So do you have a question?
I do.